Thank you, Dr. Sales, for giving us strategies to use as we implement the CUSN competencies into our academic and practice settings. I also wanted to let you know the session for a deeper dive that Dr. Sales was talking about will start at 4:30 in the Montreal Room. Greetings. I'm Dr. Chris Kofel, a member of the Planning Committee, and I was asked to explain why I'm a CUSN-esa. And the only answer I could come back with is it's the right thing to do for practice. Our next speaker is Dr. Jack Needleman, a professor and chair of the Department of Health Policy and Management at UCLA Fielding School of Public Health. His research has focused on quality and staffing in hospitals, quality measurement, and on his evaluation and the design of performance improvement activities. He has examined the factors influencing the successful implementation and sustaining of quality and process improvement. He was the lead evaluator for the Robert Wood Johnson Initiative Transforming Care at the Bedside, and his expertise in quality measurement and analysis of quality care has been tapped by the National Quality Forum, where he has served on the Standing Committee on Cost and Resource Use Measurements and the Committee on Linking Cost and Quality Measures, the Joint Commission, Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services, AHRQ, and others. Dr. Needleman is a force in healthcare and helps us turn away from the dark side to see the light of measurement related to evaluation of national quality and safety implements and initiatives. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Jack Needleman.
Thank you, Chris. I do not know who planned the agenda, but going into the third straight hour of presentation, I'm not going to do that. So you've all been sitting, you've been remarkably patient. Everybody stand up, rock around a bit, throw your shoulders back, roll them, get a little bit looser again. And when you're feeling ready to be whatever'd by another presentation, you can start sitting down. At some point, I'll ask the laggards to speed up their sitting down, but we're not there So while you're doing this, I'm still not quite sure what I was asked to present on. I know what I've got a presentation on. The guidance was rather open. It consisted of saying, you know something about evaluation, and we've got all of these competencies, and we want to know more about whether they're being effectively implemented, and people want to do research on that. So can you begin telling us, can you tell us something about how we should be approaching evaluation? Oh, and since you did this evaluation of transforming care at the bedside, maybe you could throw some examples in from there. That's about the guidance they got, right, Pat? Yeah, okay. So that's what we're going to try to do in the next few minutes. I do have a couple of thoughts on the first two sessions because evaluation and implementation are clearly related to one another. The basic outline for the presentation, and I'm going to try to get very concrete. And evaluation and both design and implementation take many steps. There's going to be a lot of stuff here. The slides are available. I'll try to keep us focused on where we are, but I want to talk about the purposes and choices in evaluation, and then the elements, what we're trying to evaluate, why we're trying to evaluate it. Talk a little bit about issues of design, and then talk about measurement and data, the implementation of the design. I'm not going to spend very much time talking about analysis, and I'm not going to spend very much time talking about reporting, because I think at this point, the issues of design and measurement and data are critical to getting evaluation results that are potentially useful for the field. And as I said, I'm going to be drawing some examples from the Transforming Care at the Bedside Initiative, and also trying to relate it some to the specific challenges of evaluating the implementation of the CUSN competencies. So let's start with why you even do evaluation. And evaluation provides information for action. If you're not thinking about what you want to do with the evaluation results, don't bother doing an evaluation. So that requires focusing on the audiences. Who is going to do something with these results? What decisions are they going to make? What are their biases, their prior beliefs, their current knowledge? Because unlike the typical model of evaluation, which is the recipients of the evaluation report are empty vessels waiting to be filled with the knowledge, the reality is, one report, one study falls into a larger base of not only other studies, but prior beliefs and prejudices. And you need to be speaking and understand those to understand how the evaluation results are going to be used, and what kinds of answers are going to move people to action. So what information do they need, and how do they take it in? Typical questions, the summative question for evaluation is, did it work? Or in the words of the Associates for Healthcare Improvement, how will you know that the change you made is an improvement? Right? That's a very summative question. Yes, it seems, things seem to be better, and no, they haven't. So you may get more concrete. How has it changed outcomes or processes? What difference does it make? Neither of those answer the question, why? And if you're thinking about replication, dissemination, adoption somewhere else, you need to understand why the questions about why it worked the way it did. Does it work differently in some places than others? And why is that? Can it be effectively implemented? What influenced the ability to implement the program, and what are the lessons learned for future implementation? So let me provide a concrete example of those questions. This is a graph, at least the two bottom lines on this graph come from the report of the Keystone Project in Michigan to reduce central line bloodstream associated, central line-associated bloodstream infections. And the reports from that work were very, very positive, and they did amazing things. The dotted line is the mean level of bloodstream infections in the eighty-some-odd units that participated. The black line is the median line, and you'll notice the black line, the median, is at zero. Fifty percent of the organizations in that program drove their central line infection rates down to zero. Well, if that's over half or over half of the units, then for the remaining units, they've got to be above that black line, and I've put in an estimate of that in that blue line. So the question you might ask is, what's the difference between the hospitals and the units on the blue line than the hospitals on the black line? In theory, it was the same implementation. Indeed, all these units, a lot of focus on the checklist, right? We've got a checklist, we've got a checklist. We've got an evidence-based checklist, this is going to make a difference. But an awful lot of the work in the Keystone Project was around prepping the units to actually make use of the checklist. And they used basically the Hopkins Comprehensive Unit-Based Safety Program, the CUSP Initiative, which is actually going to be discussed at one of the later sessions on the program. So they all got CUSP. In some places, it seemed to have stuck better than others. And the question is, why? We heard Jane talk about this issue, and we heard Ann talk about this issue, and I'm going to make a slightly different point about this. I think this, Ann talked about barriers to implementation. And that's a useful way to think about it. You'll see barriers on some of the slides I present here as well. But I don't think that is necessarily the most effective way to think about the challenges of implementing evidence, right? Jane mentioned 100 years plus of articles on hand washing. I go into any of the hospitals that you regularly go into, there will be signs all over those places about hand washing. It's not that we don't know what to do. You know, for some of the other evidence, I'm willing to agree that the staff may not know the current base of evidence. But hand washing? We've been told to wash our hands since we were three years old. We understand about the evidence base there. So the question is, why not? And here, I think you need to take a different approach to this, and this is something I learned from the Transforming Care at the Bedside Initiative, talking to the nurses there, and in some of the subsequent work. As much as I love the evidence-based practice people, and I do, they get fixated on their evidence and their intervention. So they say, let's get hand washing, or let's get the delirium assessment in place, and then let's get the skin assessment in place, and let's get this done, and this done, and this done, and this done, this added to the list of things that need to be done. You know what the work looks like on the units. You've got, your nurse is already busy worrying about how to get the ordered care delivered, get their assessment monitoring done, do the patient education, do the family and patient psychosocial support, and on and on and on and on and on. And now we're talking about adding more stuff? And of course, this is not just for one patient, where they're supposed to do that flawlessly, but for the four, five, six, eight patients, 12 patients if you're in England, that they have. You can't keep adding to the stack. And the challenge here is not figuring out what the barriers are. The challenge here is figuring out how to integrate the evidence-based practice into the flow of the work. I had a doctoral student who went back to some of the Transforming Care at the Bedside units and asked, are you still doing the things you said you adopted? And for the ones that they weren't, and there were a fairly large number, they were asked, why did you drop it? And the short answer, the primary answer was, we couldn't figure out how to integrate it into the flow of the rest of the work of the unit. That is the challenge in implementing evidence-based practice. I will argue that is the challenge of implementing the CUSN competencies into practice on a day-to-day basis. It's got to be integrated, not added on top. So any kind of evaluation needs to think about the integration. So scope of evaluation activities. What are we trying to study? Let's start with what are we trying to study? And there are whos and wheres, and there are whats. So lots of potential areas for evaluation of CUSN. In the educational settings, are the students getting the competencies? Are the faculty competently teaching the competencies? Those are evaluation questions. In practice, do the individual clinicians operate within a CUSN framework? Do they implement what is expected of them? What about the unit? Maybe it's not an individual capacity that we're interested in, but the unit level, or even higher than the unit level. Does the unit operate in a CUSN framework with high competency around the six components? There are also many options for the what. There are six CUSN competencies, and if you add them up across the skills, knowledge, and attitudes, there are 150 individual items in that competency list. And they range from concrete to fairly general. I'm not going to spend a lot of time here, but if you look at the evidence-based practice line here, the bottom line, let's start at the bottom. Promote a re, no, let's, let me think about where I wanted, no, I'm trying to shorten this, believe it or not. Okay, so the first line here is identify efficient, effective search strategies. So evidence-based practices, we've got to find the evidence, right? And there's a very concrete set of skills associated with that. On the other hand, determine evidence gaps within the practice specialty in the healthcare delivery system and promote a research agenda for evidence that is needed? That's a very broad competency. That's a very diffuse. How would you, you know, think about how you would measure that as opposed to, did people go looking for the evidence? Two very different levels of, both important competencies, but very different challenges to figure out if they've been effectively implemented on the unit. So we've got this enormous range of, from the specific to the complex. In terms of audience, you've got to figure out who your audiences are. If you're going to do an evaluation here, who do you want moved by it? And there may be multiple audiences, each of which need to be approached separately. So in the transforming care, the Robert Johnson Foundation want to know, is this a good thing for us to put our money in? The IHI and AONE want to know whether they should keep doing this work. The hospitals want to know whether they should participate, and whether they should try to replicate it among themselves, as did the unit leaders, and as did the frontline staff. So one of the questions is, who are the audiences for the CUSN evaluation activities? You know, not only where and what aspects of the CUSN implementation do we want to study, but who are the audiences for those? Tomorrow at the workshop, I'll be leading, I'm basically going to, whoever shows up, come with an evaluation question, a potential audience, and we're going to actually build an evaluation up step by step over that hour and a half. But this is the place where the questions need to begin. So if you're, again, thinking about evaluation, you've got the issue of purpose, and the audience defines the purpose. So again, here are the questions that I had earlier. Does it work? Does it work differently in some places than others? How can it be effectively implemented? And at TCAB evaluation, we were very much concerned with the lessons for implementation and the conduct at both the collaborative level, which is what IHI and AONE were doing, and in the hospital where the folks who were at the collaborative had to bring this stuff home and get it implemented in their home institutions. As I said, I'm going to focus on these last two, these two middle points at, for basically the best, the rest of the presentation, the design of evaluation and the measurement and data issues. So design. All evaluations are basically done comparing the results you get to some, on the place where you've tried to do the work, to someplace else. And there are a lot of someplace else's that you can have in your design. One is you can be testing against a standard or goal. We want 90% adoption here. I don't know where 90% came from, but we want 90% adoption here, right? That's a goal. That's a standard. All we need to do is measure whether we hit that. That's a very different kind of evaluation design. You don't need any control group, you don't need any post-pre measurement. All you need to know is that, did you hit the target? But the other two ways we deal with this are in terms of having a control group, a control environment, somebody that didn't get the implementation, somebody that didn't get the intervention. And we say, how does the unit that, where the setting that got the implementation, got the intervention, look compared to the setting that didn't? That's treatment control. The other way is, sometimes we look at, we've got data from before we did the implementation or the intervention, and we've got data from after, and we ask, did things change? And in some of our more sophisticated models, we have both a control and a pre-post study, so we've got pre-post with control. So you've got to think about the design. Can you find a control? Can you get the pre-data? What are you going to do to get pre-data before you go forward? So that's a critical part of the design. And designs need to address threats to validity and causal inference. Now, I'm a well-trained researcher, and if you look at any of my papers that have a regression model in it, or a difference of means test in it, you will see me very clearly saying, of course, these are associations, they are not necessarily causal. I'm well-trained. I know how to write that. I know how to tell my students how to write that. In my heart of hearts, if I've done a study of nurse staffing and patient outcomes, I want that to be treated as causal. I've got to convince myself that the association is causal. But fundamentally, the issue is thinking, we do this work, we want to know that the implementation of this initiative or this intervention is causally related to the change in the outcomes we're seeing. And your design has to deal with that. Randomization is our standard way of dealing with that, but we can't always do that. And it's not always appropriate. In the studies of rapid response teams in Australia, nice, very nice randomized control trial. They assigned some hospitals to have the rapid response team, and it was specified as a doctor who is an intensivist, an intensive care nurse from one of the ICUs, and a respiratory therapist, three-member teams. That was the intervention. Well, some of the hospitals that started in the intervention arm looked at that and said, we can't get the doctor there every time, let's just try it with the nurse and the respiratory therapist. Others failed to get it implemented at all. Meanwhile, some of the hospitals in the control arm discovered, heard about rapid response teams, and they started implementing it even before total failure of the randomized control trial. And that normally happens. On the Transforming Care at the Bedside Initiative, we did not randomize between the treatment and the intervention units within the same hospital. We picked one, and we had a second. But by the time we finally got to the end of that intervention, 60% of the, over 60% of the control units had implemented TCAB-like process improvement activities on their unit. So the level of engagement in TCAB-like process improvement by the nurses on those units were nearly as high as that on the units that actually had the TCAB intervention. So randomization falls apart all the time. You need other ways of thinking about this, including thinking about why people get into the intervention, how that might influence their readiness to do the intervention. And so you really need to think about, what else could explain these results? And that's the single most powerful question you can ask in designing your analysis and your basic design. What else might explain our results? Either an improvement in this outcome or no improvement? And how do we control for that? How do we take that into account? The other thing is evaluations. If you're going for publication, you need to have a P of less than .05, because the editors and the reviewers don't like it if you can't claim statistical significance. I will tell you that for the interventions in your places to figure out if we made something work, don't worry about statistical significance. Worry about whether you've got an effective design and whether, at the level of the intervention, you believe your results are permanent. And that's the advantage of a run chart kind of model, rather than the simple pre-post kind of models, that your results are permanent and they reflect a real shift from the pre-period. If you can demonstrate that to yourself with enough confidence, don't worry about the Design. Context matters. This is part of the lessons from the implementation science. So this is from the Dam Schröder Siefer framework that Ann was alluding to. And she says, you've got the individuals doing it, and you've got the unit in which they're operating, you've got the process that you want to deal with, you've got the hospital that it's, that the unit is located in, you've got the macro system, how you get paid, what the Joint Commission is bugging you about that month, all of which may influence your ability to implement things. And it just doesn't look that bad, but this is the way the Dam Schröder thing looks in her article. The columns here are simply all the places where she found one of these elements. So you can ignore the columns, it's the number of rows that ought to give you pause here. So the intervention characteristics, the outer setting, the inner setting, including things like culture and implementation, climate, compatibility, the resources for implementation, the characteristics of the individuals, the processes. Ann said 50-some-odd items on one checklist, I haven't done the count here. This is an example. Thirty-nine in Dam Schröder, thank you. Right? So you've got to take context into account, and there's no way in any of the work you're going to do that you can measure all of these contextual elements and control for them. So you need to think about your goals for addressing context in your evaluation. One option is you select as homogeneous a group of units or hospitals that you can, so that basically you've standardized the context. So you can ignore it. In other cases, you identify specific contextual variation of interest, safety culture, commitment of leadership. And you measure those things, and you look for systematic variation in a small number of contextual elements. The third thing you do is you do a qualitative study, which are qualitative and mixed method studies are specifically designed to draw appropriate research-based inferences when you have small N's. So you might think about your design as having a mixed methods component, a strong qualitative component, as well as a quantitative component. So the question I would ask you to think about are, what are some of the contextual factors for evaluation of the CUSN competencies? Either in an educational setting or in a practice setting. We've heard some of them today. Leadership, culture, you know, the culture, the commitment to improvement, all of this stuff. Remember I said about integrating new evidence into practice? Given the complexity of the environment, I would argue that the folks who know the most about integrating new practices into the flow of the work is the frontline staff. The QI department can be clueless in this regard. Your CFOs can be clueless in this regard. By the way, I think the earlier advice, you all ought to sponsor a Take Your CFO to Work Day, is one of the most valuable things nursing can do. So we know some of those things, so what are the other contextual environments? So the question I would turn around is, if, do the frontline staff have voice? Do they perceive themselves as having voice? Are there mechanisms by which they can operate to not only do the work, but improve the work? And I'll talk a little bit more about that when we talk about TCAB. So measurement and data. We've got three different kinds of measures. We've got objective measures, that is to say, we've gotten the data from some system we think gets the data right. We've got observation, or direct observation of things. And then we've got subjective. We ask people about their experience, or their perceptions, or their attitudes. So you've got to think about the types of measures, you've got to think about the burden, and you've got to think about the scope of measurement. And those two are related. One of the challenges in doing evaluation is data collection can be a burden, and if the burden gets too high, it either interferes with the process you're trying to measure and therefore changes it, or you simply get people stopping play, which means you don't get the data at all. So objective stuff is, you know, outcomes, documented processes, documented structural variables, CLAPSE rates, EHR, frequency of documentation, which, by the way, EHRs, everybody has a timestamped entry, count the number of entries for each patient by each nurse, the year and school of graduation of the staff. All these are, in some sense, objective measures. We've got observations, external observation of processes. The Altmiller 2017 paper on assessing students basically said, let's watch the students as they go about their clinical practice, and we'll keep track of them against 42 items, which was a cutback from the number of items they potentially had to look at. That's an intensive examination of the student performance. And one of the things that you often see when you've got an instrument with that many items is people begin trying to simplify it and figure out, can we get essentially the same information from fewer items? So I'm almost certain we'll see that instrument going through that kind of test. To do observation, you need informed, prepared observers. They need to know what they're looking for, and they need to understand the phenomenon they're looking at. It's often easier to observe whether a task has been done than whether the student has, and this comes from the Altmiller, appraise the healthcare environment to determine patient safety needs. Still not quite sure how you would assess whether the student did that just by observing them. them. We just did a study at UCLA looking at the implementation of a FALLS reduction program. And we actually had, we were trying to understand how nurses spent their time and how it was changed by the introduction of the FALLS program. So we had people following the nurses. When we looked at the percentage of time spent in different activities, the percent of time spent on assessment and monitoring seemed remarkably and scarily low if you're a patient like I am. So we were trying to figure out what happened. Well, we had observers who were watching the nurse and they marked down that they were taking vital signs or they were charting or they were talking to the family. And the fact that the nurse, all the time they were doing that was also basically doing an assessment and monitoring of the patient, even if it wasn't against a formal checklist, sort of got missed. And that is one of the challenges of having, of working with observation, that you need to know what you're looking for and you need to know when, what it will look like when you see it. And I think for some of these CUSN competencies, that's going to be a real challenge with relying upon observation. Lots of subjective and self-reported data. We've got surveys, questionnaires, interviews, focus groups. And then the question is, well, who are we going to ask information from? Well, we can ask it of patients. We can ask it of the frontline staff. We can ask it of the supervisors and the managers. We can ask it of others. There are a common set of problems when you ask people about things. Bias. Using language that prompts so that everybody knows what the correct answer is. The language, is the language interpretable, understandable? The language you use to ask a nurse about what they did with a patient might be very different from asking a patient what the nurse did with them. The interpretability of the question and the psychometrics. So for those of you who've seen the HCAPS survey, how many of you have seen the HCAPS survey? You'll notice that the questions there all begin with how often? There were lots of different stems that they could have used. There was an incredible amount of psychometric testing of that questionnaire before they decided the how often question was the one that elicited the clearest answer from the patients and the one that was most interpretable. The other issue you've got around issues of surveys is whether you use existing instruments which may not be exactly right for what you're studying but have well-known psychometric properties and lots of other studies to compare them to versus new study-specific instruments. My bias is to existing instruments. But if we're trying to evaluate the implementation of the CUSN competencies, we may in fact need new instruments or major retailing or restructuring of the existing instruments to make sense. And you've got to think about open-ended versus closed-ended questions, each of which have their strengths, but the open-ended questions mean a lot more post-processing of the data. And then assuring participation and obtaining complete data requires keeping the burden of reporting low. So there are constraints on the time for interviews, for questionnaires, for completion of a survey. And I think the evidence increasingly is that financial and other incentives have limited effects. So you've got to convince people of the importance of the study, the value of the data and figuring out how to motivate people in a, and as an economist, it pains me to say this, using non-purposes incentives because they are much stronger here for actually getting the data you need from people. Measurement and data, the scope of it is driven by the questions and constrained by burden. Driven by the questions and constrained by burden. But once you start thinking about context, you need a lot more data than you initially imagined you do. And you'll see that when I throw up some of the TCAB, scope of the TCAB stuff. I think the critical issue that we're going to face in evaluating or assessing the CUSN competencies is frankly going beyond the knowledge, skills, attitude framing. That's the way the competencies are presented, but what we want to know fundamentally is whether the students are competent and capable and committed to implementing them and whether the work environments that they operate in, when they go from students to nurses, so we can ask the same question of the nurses, are they competent and capable to implement it? But also does the work environment that they operate in facilitate or create barriers to their effective implementation of the knowledge they have? So I think that is going to be one of the challenges of thinking through evaluation and evaluation strategies for the CUSN. So let me turn to the TCAB data collection as illustrative of the scope needed to assess implementation in a real-world context. So this is what we told the units about why we were collecting data from them, all our effort to try to improve the response. We want to track your process. We want to motivate your team. Identify problems, meriting innovation. And we want to test, evaluate the tests of change. And we want to assess whether there is a case for TCAB, whether it seems to be capable of improving the work environment for nurses and the patient care environment in which they operate. The big evaluation questions were really what changes have been made and sustained with what outcomes? What have the hospitals had to do to be able to make and sustain the change? Very much a formative evaluation as well as a summative one. What's facilitated the transformation and how were those conditions achieved? What have been the barriers to transforming care and how have those barriers been overcome, if at all? And how hospitals use quantitative data and measurement in the change process? Those were some of the questions we were trying to answer through the evaluation. We actually had two TCAB evaluations, each of which had its own unique features and strength. One of them was done by the IHI, 13 hospitals. Less initial structure for the data collection. We relied upon IHI to organize the data collection as part of the collaborative. That was not the wisest decision we ever made as evaluators. I like the IHI people, but not the wisest decision we ever made. There was sort of a control unit in these hospitals, but not really. It was really focused on just the 13 TCAB units. There were three waves. In year one, we actually did onsite observation of the TCAB processes, semi-structured interviews with the CNOs, the unit managers and their staff. And because we were onsite, we had a lot of flexibility to sort of say, who else do we need to talk to based upon the conversations we've had? In year two, we did telephone interviews using semi-structured interview guides with the CNOs, the unit managers, a few staff, but not very many. And in the ending of this intervention, we actually used an internet questionnaire for the CNOs and the unit managers and an internet survey for the teams on both a set of measure that we called the vitality measure. How did you feel about how good a unit this is? But also about their experience actually participating in the TCAB activities. It was from that survey that we learned that the control unit staff were nearly as engaged in unit-based process improvement activities as the TCAB staff were, which by the way, we found out when we surveyed at the end of the second year, on the second-year surveys, which led us to ask a whole bunch of questions of the control unit, unit managers about what they had done and implemented separate apart from the TCAB initiative and how much of that was basically spillover from the TCAB initiative. So we had that basic structure. We collected outcomes on FALLS and other measures. Frankly, I did not expect to see very much too small a sample and not everybody was working on FALLS or the other things we were measuring. The onsite and semi-structured interviews were absolutely critical for the development of the more formal questionnaires. We learnt things there that we never would have put into the questionnaires if we hadn't heard it from the staff first or from the unit managers first in a fairly open-ended interviewing. And the formal structure was heavily influenced by what we learnt talking with people. So one of the things that I learnt largely as a result of talking to the staff in that first year's onsite interviews, what, you know, if you want staff to participate in these unit-based process improvement activities, what questions do you have to answer for them? And we never would have gotten this out of the formal structured survey because we never would have thought to put it on there. And I can't point to specific answers. I can't write up the qualitative research paper in which I can document each of these five questions. But I'm absolutely convinced that they're there and I'm absolutely convinced they're going to be there if you try implementing the CUSN, trying to change the way practice is done to more formally implement the CUSN competencies. And the first question is, what are you asking us to do? Remember, all the folks were trained by IHI or AONE at this central meeting and they had to bring it back to the other 40 or 60 people on the unit. So the how effectively that got communicated, what are you asking us to do was absolutely critical. People needed to understand how practice was, what activities were going to be, they would be asked to participate in and how they would be organized. The second question is, why should I do this? What's in it for me and what's in it for my patients? So what's the payoff here? And I think as you think about helping people reflect on the way the CUSN competencies more formally implemented in structuring care will change the way care is delivered, change the way they work in ways that are more satisfying to them, will assure the safety of their patients and the reliability of the care that they can receive. You have to make that case. You can't simply assert, these are good things. The third question was, you say we're going to have, remember I said about you need to engage the frontline staff in figuring out how to actively integrate changes into practice because they're the ones who really understand what the practice looks like? So the third question was, you're telling us you're going to give us voice and ownership here and all that. And to be blunt, we've heard that before. Why should we trust you this time? And you had to have an answer for that. And then you had to live the answer because this is appropriate to the issue of culture and leadership because the first time that got undercut was the last time the nurses were going to play. Why should we believe you this time? The fourth question was, I haven't got time to do my work now. Where am I going to find the time to do this? And I think one of the real issues there was we were asking people to believe and take on the belief that improving the work was part of the work. This is part of the job. And answering that time question was critical. All too often in these activities, the work of improving the work is treated as an add-on to what the real work is. And it therefore is, people are expected to take it on as a hobby. I don't do my hobby at work. Neither do the nurses or the nursing assistants or the housekeeping staff. So one of the challenges here apropos of integrating, I said, the evidence-based practices have to be integrated into the workflow. But if you really want people reflecting on, you know, collecting the evidence, formalizing it, using the informatics, that also has to be integrated into the work week and integrated into the way people do their work. And if you fail to do that, they simply will stop participating in that aspect of the work. And the fifth question was, we haven't been trained to do this. What help are you going to give us? So those five questions, I think, are absolutely central to engaging the frontline, whether it's the students or the staff in a practice setting, in participating in any practice improvement initiatives. And as I said, that all came from the initial set of qualitative interviews. We never would have asked those questions that way on the formal interview guides or surveys and we never would have, we would not have gotten it out of that. Okay, for the AONE survey, we had 67 hospitals. So we weren't going out to interview all of them. We even weren't going, given the budget, we weren't going out to interview any of them. So all of that measurement was through standardized instruments. We gave folks an Excel spreadsheet to enter their data on FALLS and patient census. And the spreadsheet actually generated a run chart for them that they could look at for themselves. That was part of the payoff. And then they sent us the data and we were able to accumulate it over the whole survey. So we had that. We had the counts of, we had logs of the innovations that were tested with indications of whether they had been adopted and sustained. And we had them classified in a number of different ways. We had a whole bunch of information from our initial survey of the chief nursing officers and the unit managers and some work we did with some other databases on the structure, background and organizational context of these hospitals. We had measures of TCAB implementation that came from the CNOs and from the unit managers and reports from the staff on the survey of what they participated in and the leadership and frontline staff assessment of the value of the initiative. Would you do it again? Would you recommend it be implemented on your unit? A little bit more on the measurement here. The leadership questionnaire, we had three different times, slightly structured, some overlap of questions, some differences in questions, a lot of questions about process for both the chief nursing officers and the unit managers. We asked them what were the obstacles they had and what were the facilitators they had and how they overcame the obstacles in open-ended questions that we spent time analyzing. One of the things in this was the AONE folks had a whole curriculum for unit managers related to dealing with process improvement, quality improvement. They wanted to know how well the unit managers assessed themselves. So we added a whole series of questions to the surveys for unit managers on, and again, interesting choices of language here. We asked two questions. How well-equipped did they feel they were to do that list of things? Using quantitative tools, using QI processes, motivating staff, coaching staff, collaborating with other departments, advocating, maintaining a team environment, working continuously? Some of these will look like blocks on that CUSN skill and knowledge chart. So we asked, how well-equipped do you feel you are to do these things? And then the second question we asked was, how well-supported are you in doing these Asking not only about their individual level of self-judged competence, but organizational support for them actually doing this kind of work. Here's an example of the unit manager assessment of the TCAB impact. So we had these four domains of safety and reliability, patient-centeredness, value and efficiency, and teamwork and vitality. And we asked, was there a change, you know, to what extent was there a change in this domain over the TCAB program? It improved greatly. It improved somewhat. It neither improved nor declined. It declined somewhat, declined greatly. Mostly it improved. And then the second question we asked is, to what extent was TCAB responsible for these changes? Fully responsible. Interestingly, on the value and teamwork side, about one in seven said fully responsible, not so much for the other areas. But a significant role, we're up over half at this point, and a moderate role filling in. So nobody wanted, virtually nobody said nah, didn't need this. But clearly different gradations here. And then we asked a slightly different And then we asked a slightly different question. So in many of the units, the nurses were skeptical. Been there, done that, heard it before. So we knew that. So we asked the unit managers to assess the proportion of their nurses that were unsupportive of the TCAB activities in the first six months. Interesting choice of metric here. How many were unsupportive? Not supportive, unsupportive. And it ranged from almost all, to most, to half, to some, to none. And you can see a fair degree of skepticism here. And then we asked them, okay, at the end, after one year, how many were unsupportive? Same thing. If there was no change on a unit, they're right down that middle column, that middle step, 0, 1, 3, 18, and 5. If staff became more supportive, the unit got pushed into the upper-right portion of that graph. If the unit staff became less supportive, they got pushed into the lower-left. Not very many places reported getting pushed into the lower-left. There was something about this initiative that engaged the staff. And that was an important thing to learn. The unit staff survey included a lot of things, participation in the TCAB activities, whether TCAB improved or worsened the work environment, would they encourage or discourage the adoption of TCAB on their unit? And we surveyed not just the RNs. We surveyed the LPNs, the nurses aides, the unit clerks. Because while the RNs were expected to lead this work, it was expected to be the work of the unit staff. And so here are, here's another one of those too-busy charts that looks at the kind of activities that the staff reported. From attending a meeting, to being involved in any of the tests of change, to suggesting ideas, and on and on and on. So you can see high levels of participation, higher levels for the RNs, but high levels of participation across the staff context. So if I were thinking about a CUSN evaluation where I was surveying unit staff, I would also want to be thinking about ways to differentiate their engagement and participation across the six domains, but be asking all the staff about their participation, thinking about what is relevant for the LPN or the unit clerk to know or operationalize as part of their commitment to assuring a safe and reliable work and patient care environment. Major changes, challenges in data collection and measurement, I think, for a CUSN evaluation. So let me come back to CUSN. The model of the CUSN competencies in practice for evaluating students, the KSA framework may be sufficient, but if you want to evaluate implementation in practice, you need to think about a lot more. Is it an individual practitioner? To what extent? Let's not, let's not make either-or, we're and both categories here. To what extent is it something you want to measure at the individual level? You think it's a matter of individual competency? To what extent do you think it's a unit characteristic? And what's the interaction and interplay between those two levels? Again, the question of instrumentation. Pull from existing instruments, the practice environment scale, the safety culture instruments, the readiness-for-change instruments. Or do you create new instruments? And what kind of psychometric and pre-testing are you going to do before you get those out into the field? There is a burden here. 150 KSAs, there is a burden here. There's a limit to what you can assess. So what do you think of the canaries in the mineshaft? What do you think the critical, if you see positive scores on these dozen or two dozen competencies across the six domains, you have some confidence that the full range of CUSN is being implemented? The last question is, to what extent does evaluation need to assess the context and usability of the competencies, the ability of the nurse to actively implement the competencies? So what role do you want to play? Do you want to, to what extent do you want to understand the context of the work environment, of the organizational support for QI and safety? Staffing levels? And the ability of people to complete their work? Remember, I said the critical issue here is thinking about how, what the work looks like in an integrated fashion. And we already know from multiple studies that nurses routinely report that they can't get their work done. B. Kalish has an instrument where she asks nurses, trying to create a safe space for the question, she asked the nurses, to what extent on your unit do people not, you know, are people able to complete a long checklist of activities? So this is about the unit, not about the individual nurse. One of the concerns is, the nurses are not going to feel good about not getting their work done, so they're either not going to complete the questionnaire, or they're going to misrepresent their level of completion. But you'll notice, looking at this, ambulation, you know, one of the core things and one of the things increasingly done, to get patients out of the hospital faster and make sure their recovery, often not reported. Mouth care, often not reported. Emotional support for family, to patients and their family, patient-centered care, that emotional support is part of that. 65% on one survey, 58% on another. If you don't trust the nurses, you can ask the patients. And Kalish has, B. has an instrument for asking the patients. Now, you can't ask the patients about everything. If they don't know everything, the nurses are supposed to do. But the nurse is not known 11% of the time in the patients that were surveyed. That seems, that seems to me to be a bad signal. Treatment is not discussed a quarter of the time. That does not seem to be consistent with patient-centered care. Not ambulated 41% of the time. No mouth care 51% of the time. Right? So you can go through these existing instruments and think about missed care as it relates to the CUSN competencies. Here's from the European instrument, the RN Forecast Instrument. Here, they did ask directly the nurses, were you able, you know, what, what work were you not able to get done on your last shift? Missed care, or rationed care, I think, is the way the Basel, the Swiss researchers put it. Right? You have to make choices about which care you're going to give. So which care did you ration? Did you ration away from? So on average, across the survey of care left undone during nursing shifts, 87% of the nurses reported one or more aspect of missed care. 87%. Most common was comfort, talk with patients, or educating patients and families. Half the nurses reported they didn't get that done at whatever level they anticipated of getting done on that shift. Developing or updating nursing care plans, almost half. Adequate patient surveillance, 35% felt they didn't have time to do that for all their patients on their last shift. Pain management, good news there, 7%. So again, we can look at these and look at the environment in which nurses are currently working. And I, is there any way to go back here? Yes. And I think the question we need to ask if we're going to be evaluating the implementation of the CUSN competencies in the practice environment in particular, is how it, again, it's a matter of integrating this new vision of the work, or this broadened vision of the work, or this interpretation of the work, call it whatever we want to, integrating this vision of the scope of what the nurse's work is and how it's supposed to be done into a working environment in which nurses report over and over and over again, they can't get all their work done on the shift. So what are, how are these areas of missed work related to the CUSN competencies? What does the inability to complete the care say about CUSN implementation? Is CUSN implementation supposed to improve the ability of the nurses to get their work done? Supposed to change the work in fundamental ways? Again, these are core evaluation questions to understand what difference it makes. You need to understand the context in which the efforts are being made to change the work environment, and to understand how that context works against you, but to also understand what contextual elements you need to change if you're going to be successful in making this implementation. And all that is part of the evaluation work that can and needs to be done. So with that, let me stop, and do we have time for a few questions, Chris? We apparently have about four or five minutes for questions, so.
Hi. In the Team Vitality survey, did you have baseline data for that? And also, do you have any suggestions in terms of the quadruple aim, if that would be a good tool or another tool?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we actually, we started working with that questionnaire during the IHI implementation of TCAB. It's actually been validated, so there is a paper, an article that describes it, and describes the validation work. And we use that all through the, in the AONE evaluation, we surveyed the nurses, the unit staff at the beginning with the vitality questionnaire there, at the midpoint and at the endpoint. So we actually had pre- and post-data there.
Hey, so thank you for this presentation, and I am sorry, it was me who made the schedule. Three hours of sitting, what was I thinking? So thank you for giving us the exercise, the little bit of stretch before you started. And also, I really feel evaluation is key for us as we're implementing and changing our teaching strategies and implementing the competencies into practice. So I think we always have to be thinking about evaluation, and I was hoping you'd give us the magic bullet.
Ah.
Where is it?
Well, okay, so the magic bullet is figuring out how to integrate it into practice.
Right? I see you came back around to that, yeah.
Right? So the question I would ask about evaluation is, so one of the issues is, what do you want to use evaluation data for? How frequent is it needed to, how frequently do you need to collect information? And are there ways to incorporate the data collection into the stream of the activity or into the stream of the work? So for example, in a project that Pamela Mitchell and I were working on in a hospital in Washington State, we were interested, we were looking at, the unit charge nurse had an opportunity to adjust the staffing from the standard grid in a way that, on one unit, in a way that could not be done by the charge nurse on another unit. And we want to know whether the charge nurse, changing the level of staffing above that which was suggested by the formal staffing plan, enabled nurses to get the work. Now, we could have done a long missed care sample every day, or done a sample of missed care survey for some subsample of the nurses on any given shift. What we opted for there, however, was a very simple, tell us what your day was like. Was it basically a white day? Were you able to pretty much get your work done? Was it a yellow day where you sort of got your work done, but it was a real rush and challenge to do that? Or was it a red day where you fundamentally were not able to get your work done? And just collecting that data from the nurses, shift by shift, we had enough data to analyze whether the staffing was associated with the ability to get the work done. So that's an example of looking for small, low-burden ways to collect information that can be used for evaluation. Okay, let me thank you all. Let me make a plug for, Anne and I will be around later today, talk more about the implementation and evaluation, which I do think are linked topics. I'll have a session tomorrow morning to help you design an evaluation of some aspect of CUSN. And Anne will be around tomorrow afternoon to talk about implementing and measuring implementation effectiveness. So thank you all very much.